Good morning, everyone. This is a meeting with the Board of Selectmen. Today is March 30th, Tuesday, March 30th. It is 10:00 a.m. It's a meeting of the Board of Selectmen. Is there a motion to call the meeting to order?
So moved, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Gentlemen, the first oral business that we have are budget discussions. We have fire, police, conservation to discuss their budgets. We'll take the fire chief first.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Gentlemen, morning, Ms. Hebert. It's Leonard.
Hello.
Gentlemen, you asked for a as close to level funded budget for fiscal year '22 as possible and except for salaries and one other item. That's what I'm here to present to you. The vast majority of the budget categories for fiscal '22 reflect the same amount of money that was appropriated in fiscal year '21. On the operating side, there's one exception. Last year, we did not request any funding for the assessment center. Given our conversations about bringing on a full-time officer at some point in the near future, we would need to activate that assessment center to provide the means by which the qualified candidates would be selected, I'm sorry, ranked. So we're requesting $4,000 for the purpose of the assessment center. So on the operations side of the budget, fiscal year '22 request is the same as fiscal year '21 appropriation except for that $4,000. And on salaries, we've added in the contractual amount for the last year of the full-time firefighter paramedics in both the full-time salary position and overtime. The only two that are outstanding are the fire chief's salary and the qualified firefighter salaries. The qualified firefighters will be dependent upon any COLA that you gentlemen vote for town employees, and we're in the process of negotiating the fire chief contract.
That's correct. Julie, I just have one question. When we were discussing the fire EMS department budget, well, the assistant accountant that does a lot of work for the processing of bills and things of the like, correct, Chief? The assistant, the salary change, is it 65 that we discussed? That number should be changed to a reduction from the 76, 57?
Yeah, I'll highlight that so that when we go through and check all the salaries, I'll make sure that that's accurate.
Very good. And Chief, on the salaries overtime, that dropped dramatically from fiscal year 2020. That's because of the fourth position that we brought in? Or is that a third position?
Well, we blew it apart this year. We will run a significant deficit in overtime for this fiscal year because of the staffing challenges that we had. For a good six months, we were running without a full-time employee. But now that's been stabilized since the hiring of the new full-time employee. This week, there's no overtime, for example. But this overtime, as you know, is always the, you know, nailing Jell-O to the wall. But we hope, now that we're stabilized with our core of eight full-time staff members, we should have, we should be able to get a real good handle on what that actual cost is.
Okay. So you're content with that number right now for this budget year?
For fiscal year '22?
Yeah. It looks like it's, you know, a small increase, but due to the contractual issues, I understand that, from the 56 to 58. Are you okay with that number?
In the past, we've had funding in the full-time line item because we were running late to move from full-time salaries to overtime.
Correct.
We won't have that for the next fiscal year. Good approximation, but I think at the end of next fiscal year, we'll know exactly how much our structural overtime costs.
Okay.
Barring any illness or injuries.
Okay. And as far as the part-time EMTS, is that's, that's, that's good?
Yes, that will be reflected with whatever COLA the board decides to give, the non-union employees.
All right. Looks good. Gentlemen, questions, concerns, comments?
I think you had a budget. Obviously, you'd like to add more and always build, but, you know, the circumstances, we've got to make do with what we had.
Right. Yeah, I think the, just for anybody at home for the board, I mean, we discussed the assessment center for the $4,000. That is to send our guys out, the crew out there for the assessment center to create a captain's position because, you know, everybody, I think, realizes that the chief's coming up on his retirement in the next few years. So it's to be proactive, to fill a position, get somebody into the captain's position to kind of work side by side with the chief and get to understand all the ins and outs outside of the regular duties of our fire, and that's just more of the paperwork, the hospital dealings and things of the like, correct?
Correct. It'll give an opportunity for me to mentor the full-time officer on the responsibilities of the office of the fire chief and also to have a truly dedicated second-in-command, which is something that we've never had. So it'll be a true benefit to the department and to the town.
Gentlemen, Mr. Baroche.
Chief, this is a little bit skewed from this budget, but the ambulance service, that generates income from the town.
It does.
Is that on how what we've been generating in the past?
It has. Calls went down last year, the total number of calls. We probably lost a month's worth overall, but during the peak of COVID, the routine calls disappeared. You know, we did have a slight uptick in COVID-related calls, but the other, people didn't want to go to the hospital. So unless it was a true dire emergency, they resisted calling 911, and we saw that across the region. But it's picked up considerably again. We're back to the same volume as we've had in years past, and the revenues reflect that as well. So we're on track to bring in $600,000 of collected revenue for this fiscal year, of which a certain amount is moved over at town meeting to be added to the pie that funds the town government.
Correct. Chief, on that note, he's talking about the EMS reserve received account, correct?
Yes.
That's pretty, the budget's roughly just over a million bucks, but we fund that through EMS reserve, we see roughly 55% of the budget?
I believe, Julie, it was 55,000, I'm sorry, 500 and a little over 500,000 last year.
Fifty, 52%.
Five hundred and fifty, 519,000 last year, yeah.
So 52%.
Yep. Of the budget comes from EMS reserve receipts.
Right. And there are some big-ticket items that are coming off of that. The bond for the ambulances will be paid in the next two years. I believe those come off the books.
It is, couple of years.
That reserve should continue to grow. Gentlemen, I also submitted for your consideration four articles. Are you bringing, are you looking at those today, Mr. Chairman?
No, we haven't. We just got a draft copy. Ms. Hebert sent it out, I think, a day or two ago, Chief. Is there a motion to approve the fire EMS budget?
So moved, I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Chief, on the letter I received, a letter to Mr. Sinnerizio from the chairman of the planning board from the fire department, and I had some concerns and a question on one of them, but as far as the access road says, "All projects are to provide 360-degree site access via gravel road, not less than 14 feet in width." Again, I had a conversation with you a while ago about the fire code being 20 feet in width?
For the fire code for residential access, yes.
Okay, so the fire code...
There's no reference in the fire code at all to this type of access.
For a 20-foot wide road?
There's some sites that are built without access. It's truly a process of the nature of what apparatus we would be sending and using, and the appropriate place to put that is through the planning board permit.
Okay. It's just I, there's a model template. Unfortunately, we don't have a real solar bylaw in town, but there's a model template on mass.gov, and it says to the building code, as far as access roads, it says to the building code and fire code. So I was just referencing a model off of mass.gov.
So, you know, there's some, some folks believe that we want a road so that we can bring the ladder all the way around. That's not the case. Those apparatus aren't built to go off the road, and we would never send them off the road. The most that you're going to get around 360 degrees around the solar fields are squad three, which is a pickup truck, a four-wheel-drive pickup truck. So 14 feet is adequate. The type of road, we had a very productive conversation with Ms. Hebert, Mr. Sinnerizio, myself, Mr. Hannan, Jim Merrick, to kind of memorialize what the fire department requests are for consideration on all of these solar projects. And the, nowhere in the code, Mr. Chairman, does it give me the authority to say what, how the road should be built, what material. But in conversation with others, there's an impervious substance, and if it's not impervious, then wastewater becomes an issue and things of that sort. So I step out of the conversation when it gets to how the road is constructed. That's not in my, on my resume.
I just wanted to make sure the road was built suitable to for an engine, if it had to get in there carrying that kind of weight. It even goes in onto explaining like 50,000 pounds to be able to handle. So that would be a gravel road, probably 12 inches of, it's like processed gravel, right, to carry that load, because you can't let a road deteriorate. If there was a fire, the engine would have to get back there, and it can't get back there if it's grass or just a regular skippy three or four-inch surface, gravel surface road. So I just want to make sure that the roads are built adequately for our fire apparatus. In case of emergency, we need to get out there.
So the town of Uxbridge is seeing an uptick in solar farms, and the chief and I have spoken several times over the last couple of weeks, and these items that I mentioned here are consistent with what they're doing in that community. And also, he's taking some of our ideas and incorporating them into his community's plan as well. The biggest threat, gentlemen, that we envision, you know, having talked with the senior members of the department, is really not from within, it's from without. It's a brush fire that gets out of control and burns towards the solar farm. And now we have the obstacle of the fence and the electrical equipment, things of that sort. So, you know, in talking with other fire service leaders, it's really not an offensive fight. It would be a defensive, trying to make sure that that fire doesn't spread to the solar farm, and that's why we'd really focus in on the brush truck capabilities.
If I could just talk to you about the water?
Sure.
Just kind of struck an idea in my head. It talks about water sisters and 1,500 gallons to be installed with appropriate fire connection. So the water sisters, I'm familiar with those. It's just big plastic tanks.
Septic tanks, yeah.
Basically. But in the winter, would they freeze?
No, they're below the frost line.
So they would have to be buried below the frost line for them to freeze? Do you have any idea in talking with any of our solar projects, the engineers, on what this cost would be for these sisters to be installed and things of the like?
I was approached by one developer. I think that plan is by the, is off the table at this time, and it was a few thousand dollars for a system this size.
I know the tanks are only like two grand for the actual tank, 1,500-gallon plastic tank, but then you have construction and things of the like.
And it would be filled and maintained by the developer.
I was trying, I was trying to envision, instead of going along with the water sister tanks, it was maybe if the cost was a little bit larger, maybe we could take that cost and talk to the developers to maybe fund some of the money for a new tanker truck.
Yeah. Well, you've got to remember, we're good with where we are now. We have the three engines that have 1,000 gallons, the tanker that has 1,800 gallons. That's a considerable amount of water. The system is designed when it's outside of the water district, so we would be going back and forth to a hydrant to fill, to come back to the scene. That 1,500 gallons underground would help bridge the amount of water in time between exhausting what's on the trucks, reloading, and coming back.
I was just, I just looked at the 1,500 gallons. I think your pumps do 1,000 gallons a minute?
Depending on the flow, what...
So basically, it's like a minute and a half, and you're out of water?
Well, it can pump 1,000 gallons a minute. One hose discharges 100 gallons per minute.
Okay.
So then you just play...
So roughly, if you had 100 gallons a minute, we'll call it 1,000 gallons. It's 10 minutes you're on.
At full flow, yeah.
Okay. Okay, it's fine. Thank you.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
You're very welcome. Gentlemen, any questions?
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
All right. Police, Chief Richmond?
Morning.
Good morning. Good morning, Chief. How are you today?
I'm very good. Yourself?
Good, complaining.
This, funny, I've been chief, you know, almost 18 months. I think this may be only like the third time they've actually met in person, so this is actually kind of, kind of nice for change, you know? If you indulge me, as far as the budget goes for FY '22, I'm just going to make a quick summation of what I did in FY '21. So in March, early March of last year, while preparing the current fiscal year's budget, before COVID really, really took hold and reared its ugly head, I prepared a budget that was modeled in large part over the FY '20 budget. As part of that budget, we had purchased two Cruisers. As part of that budget as well, I included $50,000 in academy cadet salaries and about $21,000 in equipment costs to use to fill two full-time vacancies that we had and also to hire three part timers that we were down. As COVID ramped up, you know, and we were requested to cut our expense budgets, I looked long and hard at our staffing levels. We weren't in bad shape based on the personnel that we had, but I also knew with COVID that academies were going to be delayed for a significant amount of time. So right off the rip, I, which is not reflected in the budget that came to you ultimately in June, is I self-imposed the $50,000 cut on salaries for the academy cadets and the $21,000 on equipment. My thought process there was I looked at our list, our civil service list, and I knew one of the top two candidates had a full-time academy and would be willing to come here. So there was a cost there that we weren't going to have to bear. And I thought, and I'm still fairly confident, that if we were able to hire the second full-time person that we, with some, some smart spending, conservative spending during the course of the year, we could absorb those costs into, into the budget as it was. So I took that $71,000 off. But then when I looked at the expenses and I looked at what we had to cut, and like most of the departments in town, or I should say all the departments in town, there's very little, there's very little fluff. But in looking at the condition of the fleet at the time, the vehicle fleet, I figured it was the wisest choice to get that, to get to that 5% cut was to buy one cruiser instead of two. Cruisers were in pretty good shape. So we had originally had an estimate from a, from a large distributor for $112,000 for two Cruisers. So we went down to 56, and we got one. And that's, when we cut that cut, we came in a little above 5% at that. I think it was about maybe 7 or 8%. During the course of the year, we purchased that second cruiser, the year, once we got into the year, we purchased that second cruiser. But instead of going to the one-stop-shop, you know, Megamore, so to speak, that we've gone to in the past, we, and by we, I really mean Sergeant Mike Martin, drilled down through the bid lists, and we actually went to a smaller distributor, purchased the vehicle there, and then went to another upfitter, which would be the company that puts, installs the lights and the radios and the cages and things of that nature, decals on the car and whatnot. And we priced that out separately, again, going through the mass bid list. And we actually were able to purchase a car that by the time we paid the last bill on it is about $47,000, $46,000, $47,000 this year. So we actually saved of that 56 that was initially allocated, we actually are going to come in probably about nine grand on top. So as we jump ahead to FY '22, the budget by and large is level funded. We didn't touch salaries with the exception of a contractual obligation for me and also for longevity, based on, you know, the amount of time that people are here. So that's, that's pretty much, that's just kind of left alone. The big change, we go down to vehicles, is the big bump is instead of requesting one vehicle, we requested two. Now, I believe the copy of the budget that I prepared and submitted back in December had a placeholder amount of $90,000. And as we finished what we were doing with this cruiser and get some prices for FY '22, that number's actually going to bump up to about $99,000, yeah, $99,400 for that. But that's a, that's a pretty true number, whereas the number that we had coming into last year, the 112 for two, I think some of that had to do with hybrid and had to do with the place we were going to. In other words, you were just kind of picking off a menu, like, hey, I want the number one, and we didn't really get our hands dirty, and they kind of did everything. What we did this time, we really drilled down, what do we need, what we don't need, using different companies, smaller companies that tend to charge, even still within the, within the bid list, charge a little less because we're kind of cherry picking what we want on the cars and what we actually need versus what that top package comes with. So...
And then, Chief, that's not Dodge you're talking about?
Yeah, we went with the Dodge. We went with the Dodge. Dodge is, with the Dodge Durango is the base model. It's comparable to the Ford as far as it's in the, you know, the same class, but Ford and MH, I shouldn't say the name of the company, but Ford and the company we were dealing with really kind of left the small personnel, so to speak. We may only purchase one or two a year, even though you're buying off the bid list. We would run into issues with delivery, and we'd also run into issues, to be honest with you, with quality of work over the years, you know, wiring and things of that nature. Whereas we bought the car from the dealership and we brought it to an upfitter where that's all they do is they upfit vehicles. And we've had that car in service now for probably about three months, and the three officers that are utilizing, can't say enough about it, performed well. It's shop-looking, not the debts, it'll be all, but it's, it's running well. We went with the Dodge product. So we figured last year was the year to do it, where we're only buying one. Let's, let's test it out and see how it goes, and that test seems to have worked, and it's worked well enough for us to go with the Dodgers again this year.
Very good. Thank you.
And as far as the vehicle goes, last year, when we asked the departments to cut their budgets, police department was one of very few that actually cut their budget to try to hit that reduction, albeit it's very difficult where we are with our budget. So there's not much left to cut. We've been doing a lot of that in the past over a decade, right, with the ins and outs of the economy and things of that nature. So, you know, when we do it, Chief, it's roughly, if you do two cars a year, it's roughly every five years you turn the fleet over?
About that, yes. And in this year or two, in past years, sometimes you get the trade-in value that you get for the old cars varies depending on the condition in which they're turning it, turning them in.
Sure.
The two cars are scheduled to be replaced this year. One has just over 100,000, one has over 120,000 miles. So just based on that, the amount that they won't commit, they won't commit to what we're going to get for trade-in value, so we're kind of going on the low end. That being said, I've had a conversation with Jerry Bergeron, the director of EMA, is in need of a vehicle. At least one of those two vehicles is in good shape for what he needs it for. So our intention is to, you know, if we're able to get two, is to turn one over, turn one over to Jerry for use with EMA to replace one of their older vehicles.
Yeah, the money, the trade-in values next to nothing. What is it, 1,500 bucks, two grand?
If that, if we can get it, yeah. Depending on the car we trade in.
Mr. Merrick, you have something to say?
Mr. Chairman, because of our green communities involvement and because we've been now involved for six years, and if we achieve a certain percentage rate, DEP is now giving us double the amount back on electric or hybrid vehicles. This means that if we were to purchase the vehicles, which I think the police department does, DEP will give us back $15,000 per vehicle if it's a hybrid. Just something to consider.
Hybrid, not meaning fully electric, just combustion, gasoline combustion and electric, right? Simple to what we have, these little ones, but...
The little ones we have are full-electric.
They are full-electric.
But the hybrid, you know, is a combination of both. So they'd be able to maintain the electronics. I believe that the fire department, I mean, the police department needs in their vehicles for their computers and everything else.
Is that something that you're pursuing as far as the...
We just found out about this. So, I mean, I can talk to the chief later about that.
I'm not, I'm not prepared to make that commitment this year, only because I'd have to kind of explore and see what other police departments are doing with their frontline Cruisers and to ensure that, I don't want to be the test case, no disrespect, if it was for like, say, an unmarked car, yeah, I would definitely consider it, which is not going to get the 24/7 use of a marked police cruiser and not be subjected to the same riggers. But at this point, I wouldn't be prepared to commit to a hybrid for...
No, that's fine. We'll just start exploring.
Absolutely, no, absolutely.
I mean, he's, he's been there for the town and the green energy community. So with these kind of grants, so it's something that we could discuss over the next year, right, and look into it, and you can kind of put your feelers out there. And again, if it comes up to one of the unmarked cars, I think we could absolutely capitalize on that green communities grant.
I would be open, I would absolutely be open to doing that.
For something like that, right? Chief, I've always been an advocate of the two vehicles in your budget, even in the, over the past years. I remember we had some problems with the recessions and things of the like when I was even back on FinCom, and I pushed for the two vehicles to get back in because I think it's important. When we say a police vehicle has 100, 120,000 miles, it's more about idle hours.
Correct, correct.
So, I mean, that's where the real wear comes on an engine and things of the like. So a lot of the Cruisers, they're not constantly moving, but they're sitting there idle. The officers never shut the vehicle down, so they're always running.
One thing I did do with this year's budget versus last year's budget is with cutting the vehicle from last year's budget, I get up the vehicle maintenance, which is, which was from 16,000 to 20,000 for the year we're in now, anticipating the additional wear and tear on the other vehicles.
Sure.
If we were to get the two vehicles this year, as this proposed budget has, as I propose going back to the, dropping the $4,000 that I bumped up in vehicle maintenance. We've done well with it over the years. It's, you know, we've got to, you know, keep tires on, keep oil changes, things of that nature. And, you know, there's the occasional accident, and accident with a deer, which seemed to be more frequent. We just dealt with that. We're paying deductibles and whatnot, but we dropped, if we get the two cars this year, we're going to drop that vehicle maintenance line item back to what it was in FY '20.
So that's something to consider if things change and we, for deficit reasons, and we can't afford to fund two vehicles, we would need to boost that line item back up at least the $4,000, correct?
Yes.
Keep that in mind. I'm just saying, hey, cut a vehicle, but don't look at the repairs and maintenance of vehicles, right?
Correct. Okay, excellent. Mr. Baroche?
I'm assuming there's no increase in salaries because contractors...
Yes, they, June 30th is, is the contracts up on the board.
Okay, so this new number doesn't reflect what...
Whatever the COLA would be for, for the unions?
Okay, okay. Good, that was my question.
At the, oh, if we can't get that done, in the past, what we've done is we've gone to a fall town meeting and made the appropriation of your article, that usually gets paid back retro. So, I mean, with the timeframe from now to me, we basically go five weeks, roughly five weeks to get the town meeting. So unless miracles happen, we'll see about that. Gentlemen, Mr. O'Neal, any questions, comments, concerns?
No, it's lots about, you know, the police department budget and the fire department budget, but a bigger, you know, it's how we look at the federal funding that's come down. It was at 1,048. And I think it'd be helpful if we had some parameters as to what that money could be spent on because of, you know, I think we're all in agreement that funding, we should be looking at one-time expenditures, right? Not, not put it into essentially bodies or operations. But, you know, if we can fund Cruisers for, you know, for a year, you know, that would alleviate a little bit of that burden. You know, ask Julie to work with the department heads and develop a capital expenditure budget, you know, like a punch list of things that we should be looking at and see if we can use that federal stimulus money, whatever it's called, to help lighten the load a little bit, you know?
Is that coming?
Yeah, I don't have any new info on it yet. I think they're still working out all the details, but I do agree, I've sent some, some stuff out to you guys, and I think if we want to set up a task force, that's what I'm looking at, too. Let's get some people together, come up with some good ideas so that we're proactive when the money actually does come through and they do have the guidance. We can kind of take what we've already worked at and tailor it down and give some good ideas to the Selectmen.
I think that's what it's all about, is what Selectmen O'Neal just suggested. It's that money should be spent one-time expenditures, not ever put in an operating budget because it's not reoccurring. So I agree with Selectmen O'Neal 100%. It should just be put towards capital, things that benefit the community as a whole, right? Whether it be Cruisers, ambulances, whatever it may be, you know, whatever we can use it for. I think we have to establish some guidelines under the federal government, what money can be used for, and then start deriving. under the federal government, what money can be used for, and then start deriving opinion from them, but I'm, I'm with Selectman O'Nah a hundred percent on that one. All right. Any other, uh, questions, comments, concerns? Chief, how are you doing with your overtime budget, you all right with that? I know the contract changed and some things had changed and you're doing good and then.
We, we were doing so well.
And I know, I know, you spoke too early, that was the problem.
No, no, uh, well, uh, to be honest with you, compared to, to where we were last year, um, at this time, we're, we're, we're aces, um.
Okay, good.
We, we're still waiting on, you know, we're, we're, the overtime budget, we're going into the, we're going to be going into the fourth quarter now, um, and I only have the, um, the reconciliations, which would be through the end of February, um, with about ninety percent of that budget expended. But that being said, we are still waiting on about eighty thousand dollars of, uh, money to either be transferred to us via reimb- uh, reimbursable grants or the salary, the schools portion of the, uh, school resource officer's salary, which normally comes in in June.
Okay.
So we're sitting on about seventy-eight to eighty thousand dollars. I'm cautiously optimistic, um, but then again, we are going into, May and June are usually heavy overtime months, but we're certainly in much better shape than we were last year. Um, with that, with that eighty thousand dollars, some of it goes to different salary line items, so to speak, but if you just, you know, if, i- in theory, if that all ends up, which it would at the end of June, all ends up in overtime, I think we're going to be in good shape.
Great.
And that, part of that is, is, you know, we were able, over the last, you know, year and a half, we were able to get the staffing in there for the most part, uh, that we, that, that had been talked about, you know, several years ago, to get, uh, extra people on a shift and not replace the first person out, we've done that on the eight to four shift and the four to twelve shift. And we've seen, you know, immediate dividends, I got, you know, a spreadsheet where I just kind of keep in track of, of how many shifts, you know, and how, how much, roughly how much money, just using the average overtime rate. And that first person out, um, as, as of right now, has probably reduced the overtime budget by about a hundred and five thousand dollars so far this year, about two hundred and sixty-one shifts. We had an officer, uh, that was activated for the summer in, in July and August. We've had somebody on light duty for several months due to, uh, non-work related hip surgery. He's coming back, uh, full duty next week, so he was on light duty for about three months, um. We've also had, you know, trying to, trying to, um, hire and maintain full-time dispatches and, and I, I say that, it sounds negative when I first say it, but the dispatches that we've hired, we've have two long-time dispatches, um, that, that are, that are, that are aces, and we've hired several over the past year, full-timers, we've probably hired, we're on our fourth dispatcher in my time here, but the first one we hired, um, came from a, a regional center and came in and was here for six weeks, but just, it wasn't, there were issues with vacation time and things like that, she knew coming in, but she wasn't comfortable, she liked the, the department, but then she liked to travel, but the, it was just too much of a change. Uh, another, one of our full-time dispatches that we hired, got, uh, hired into a full-time police academy, um, another one into a full-time state directions academy. And we, the, the third one, the, the fourth one, which we're probably going to talk about, um, later today, uh, later at this meeting, um, we just hired, uh, hired her from a neighboring community that has dispatch experience, so she'll be online a lot sooner than somebody that would be starting with, with no experience.
I'm actually, um, is there, you gentlemen have any other questions, comments, concerns for the chief? Is there a motion to approve the police department's budget, as presented?
Second, that.
Oh, with minor changes. Motion's been made, second, and all those in favor?
Yes.
Chief, before you go anywhere, let's just jump right to it, I'm going to go right to your, uh, so you can get back to doing your business. Um, approval for a vacant dispatcher position and you have a, a young lady, um, that has quite the credentials, she holds certificates, certifications in law enforcement dispatch, emergency medical dispatch and EMD CPR. She holds the required state certification in the use of next-gen emergency nine-one-one anter point. And she utilizes the same call and records management software IMC as we use. Um, and you, she was, looks like she'd been in, um, local law enforcement agency for the last three years and you're just asking for consideration of putting her at that three-year step of experience, is that correct?
Yes, for, for salary, yes.
Gentlemen, any, any concerns of, um, having the, authorizing the chief to hire her at step three in the contract? She does have three years' experience, I spoke with Ms. Hebert, I looked at the, the, uh, check and it coincides with the step three, three years' experience.
Yeah, no problem on my end.
Yeah.
Need a motion to approve?
Do.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations, Chief.
Thank you very much.
Get her, she's already on board, right, by one day or so?
Yeah, she, yeah, she's, uh, she started training, uh, yeah, she's, and she's already, she's already, yesterday was her second day of training, she was already, uh, already on the radio, which is, sometimes it takes.
This young lady actually has ambitions to become a police officer, is that correct?
Correct, she actually appears, uh, on our civil service list, um, albeit, you know, a little low because she's not a town resident right now, but, uh, that's, you know, that's part of, you know, the type of people I want to hire, you know, ideally, I'd like to have this, you know, dispatchers stay a little longer than six months or a year, um, but if we get them on board, in this case, uh, we don't have to commit a long time training and, you know, she's here a year, eighteen months and, and moves on, whether it be with us or other department, um, you know, as a police officer, then that's, you know, she's, she's going to make herself, uh, ma- make us proud and, and do well by herself to learn the job, so, uh, from that aspect, so, it's, uh, it's a, it's a process that, that, it's, uh, it's a continuing process, but it's, it's, it's for good reasons.
Yeah, we have a couple of young ladies now in that position, right, dispatched at?
Yes, yep.
To a career of police officers?
We have, uh, another, one of the other dispatches we hired back in, uh, August, we had sponsored her. She hadn't taken a civil service exam, but we sponsored her in the, uh, the part-time academy, um, through no obligation, we had no obligation to her whatsoever, but she wanted to put herself through. So she went through the part-time academy that was held, you know, that sent to the, the regional organization that we had hosted, uh, during COVID, well, pre-COVID, then it got, you know, it got put on hold like everything else. Uh, but she, she got herself through that and, um, you know, she's looking, you know, looking to, to take, take the next step at some point as well, I mean, unfortunately, there's a lot of changes coming on uh, regards to the training of part-time officers with the, um, the police reform bill, but I'm not going to, we won't get into all that now, but it's basically going to require extended training, um. But, but yes, and short answer is, uh, yes, we do have some promising, uh, young candidates, uh, down the pike if we can, uh, work it and get to them.
Okay, excellent, thank you, Chief.
Okay, thank you very much.
Have a great, Joe, have a great day and tell, uh, Sergeant Madden, he said thank you very much for his hard work and due diligence when it comes to the cruisers.
Absolutely appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, conservation, MS four discussion. Welcome, Merrill Lee.
Good morning.
Morning, Merrill Lee.
Um, basically, my budget has changed very little, um. We took a little bit of money out of training and testing and we added twelve thousand dollars to the MS four permit.
So. On, on the, um, MS four, how many, how many stormwater management permits has the committee issued since becoming a town bylaw in two thousand and seven, Merrill Lee?
Not many, um, just a few.
And you had eight in the stormwater MS four permit, uh, eighty-five hundred last year, did we spend that, um, money last year?
No, we didn't spend that money last year, we didn't get a contract with the, um, the stormwater collaborative that we've been working with. So we haven't been, we haven't been spending any money this year.
What, you increased the twelve thousand dollars, what's the increase going to be spent on, do you know?
Yes, they have, um, well, they, they do a lot of things, actually, the stormwater collaborative does a lot of the, the testing of the, of the outfalls themselves and then they do, uh, they have a new, um, trailer that they use for illicit discharges where they have, you know, smoke and dye and, and whatever it takes to follow the pipes through, to see where the discharges might be coming from.
And, and who is the collaborative?
The collaborative is, uh, it's made up of eight towns around Buzzards Bay working with students from the Mass Maritime Academy and the, um, Buzzards Bay National Astuary Program.
So they're the same folks that did this one down here?
Yes.
Off of, uh, the River Park?
Oh, no, no, they're not the coalition. No, the collaborative is, is a, a separate entity, basically led by the Buzzards Bay National Astuary Program.
So the Buzzards Bay is, was responsible for this one, when we did the one at the bottom of Gillette Street where the River Park is?
Oh, yes, yes, the, this.
That's not part of the collaborative, Buzzards Bay just took that initiative to do.
Yes.
Identify this one, because I know I looked at, I think, six other ones or something?
Yeah, that was a grant program and they, they, um, decided to do ours as one of three.
The, um, the only other question that I, uh, I'm concerned, I guess I should say I have, as, as far as this goes, is, uh, the stormwater agent is in the planning board's budget, should stormwater MS four permit also be in the planning board's budget under stormwater agent?
Um, that's up to you guys, it's, uh, it makes more sense to put it under the stormwater, uh, to the stormwater authority who is the planning board. So, yeah, it, it, it makes sense to put it there.
And just, um, the stormwater agent's salary is there in the planning board?
Right.
And the stormwater commission and the stormwater, the stormwater commission's different than, it's made up of, you know, Mr. Merritt, Mr. Young, Mr. Cinerizio, yourself, Dammanad. Um, I forgot if there's another name that's on that, um, and then you have the stormwater committee, which is basically the planning board, right?
Right, right.
Okay. Guys, I don't know how you feel about that line item maybe transferring to Ms. Hebert, transfer stormwater MS four permit out of conservation and into the planning board's budget with the stormwater agent, I think it would make sense to do that, but it's up to the board's discretion. It's neither here nor there.
Too much in the weeds for me, Mr. Chairman, so if you guys want me to do it, it's fine.
Makes sense?
Um, I have no, uh, objection to it. I don't know.
Ms. Hebert?
You can do it, yeah.
Where that takes, it was a planning board, what is, um, what's the consequences, so what's the actions of doing that?
They're the stormwater, this, they're the stormwater committee, I mean, they're, they're responsible for all the permitting coming to stormwater management, so.
I can't imagine that they would have a problem with it, but, you know, it ma- it makes sense to put it under the stormwater authority.
The, um, the, we, did, did they, have they ever met the stormwater committee?
As a stormwater board? Uh, not specifically as, as a stormwater board, I don't think, no.
Because they, we, we discussed fees, permitting fees, call it thirty days ago at the Board of Selectmen's meeting, and I let um, the board know that that calls out for inside of the bylaw.
Mm-hmm.
That they set the fees, um, not the Board of Selectmen, so I think that with all these solo projects going on and stormwater permits needed to be done and all the other stormwater permitting that we should have been doing, I think those fees that are derived from stormwater permits should be paying the salary of the stormwater agent and not taxation, right?
Right, that makes sense.
I think that's, that's the goal of, of stormwater is, is those fees should be paying for the salary, not taxpayers.
Yeah, that makes sense.
And we've been subsidizing that salary for a long time, so I would like to see stormwater fees be set, and I talked about scales depending on the size and scope of the project, so you can't set a fee of a hundred bucks and do something as big as like the quarry.
Right.
That wouldn't make much sense, so I think there's some work to be done there as far as the committee goes to set these fees and get those fees set, schedule a fee set.
Yeah.
Similar to what Mr. Merritt does with different kinds of building permits, you know, a shed's ten bucks, but a house maybe five hundred bucks, whatever it is, right? Um, because the amount of work that's involved on his behalf to go out and do inspections, um, I think that's how he derives a certain fees that correlates with the amount of work that he's put in to do it, so.
Right.
Something for you to conversate with the stormwater committee.
Right, and there's a, there's a meeting of the stormwater board, I believe, on the fifteenth, so.
Okay. Last fifteen?
No, April fifteenth.
April fifteenth?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, April fifteenth. All right. Gentlemen, questions, concerns, comments, from this?
Nope.
No?
No.
Thank you.
Motion to approve the budget?
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, Chief, Mr. Chad, do you want me to make that move then?
I think you, I think it's the appropriate thing to do, I mean, stormwater, all this permitting, all these permitting fees should be structured, um, through stormwater and that's, that should be captured by permitting fees, the salary to the agent should be captured by fees.
Okay.
Not from general taxation, so.
All right, I'll make that move for you. You guys will get updated budgets after this, and I'll leave out the amount.
Yeah, just a swap, it's not.
Put it under the planning board?
Yeah.
I mean, to the, uh, the planning board, yeah.
I think it should, it should go under the planning board's budget, um, stormwater agents' salaries there, I think it would make more sense to have that
Mm-hmm.
put right in there in the, the committee, really.
Yep.
There's a stormwater board.
Right.
Which is, you know, like I said, Dan from TPW, Mr. Merritt, Henry that used to be here from planning, Mr. Cinerizio, the chairman of the planning board, Merrill Lee, and I think I might be missing a name, but I, I think that would be the optimal goal, is to move everything underneath of that umbrella, that budget, um, and Mr. Cinerizio's here now, so. We're talking about stormwater, Mr. Cinerizio, and I just made a recommendation, Merrill Lee and her budget and the conservation as stormwater MS four permit, the stormwater agents under your purview with, um, the stormwater agent's salary, so I was just talking to the board, perhaps we move that line item out of conservation, the stormwater MS four, move that for the permitting, move that into the planning board's budget, um, seeing how, it is really the planning board who is the committee. There's a commission com- composed of Mr. Merritt and, and Mr. Manad and things of the, they'll like to make policies and things of that nature, but it's the committee to en- enforce the bylaws, really.
Correct.
And set, and set fees and things of the like, so, um, I think it would work better under that umbrella.
Yeah, we got a special meeting coming up on the fifteenth, uh, for public hearing on that.
On, on permitting fees?
No, on, for stormwater, that MS four stuff.
Oh, yeah, MS four?
Yep.
Okay. Yeah, so I, you know, I just told Merrill Lee, I mean, we can encourage the committee to come up with some fees, permitting fees, we discussed it as a board maybe thirty days ago, that it wasn't under our umbrella to do that, under the bylaw, it states that it's the committee or the commission either or, because I get a little confused, the commission's.
One's the one, one's the other.
Correct. Um, and having a sliding scale of how we set up fees, you can't just have a ten dollar fee for a stormwater permit if you're dealing with something as large as the quarry, um, versus a small homeowner or whatever, the disturbance maybe, I think we have a bylaw change, it changed that disturbance of land under the stormwater bylaw, I thought I read it, we just cut that over to us to warrant for articles, and I think the disturbance that we had was by.
That's taking care of all this, Pat, you in?
Yeah, it was something to do with like five thousand square feet of disturbance, which is kind of ridiculous. Um, and we're upping it, I guess, I think I've read something about forty thousand square feet, so almost an acre of land now, so you kind of make a scale in permitting fees, right, that coincide with the size of the project. Um, and we talked about just now Merrill Lee trying to capture enough in fees, permitting fees, to capture the amount we pay as a salary for the stormwater agent, because I think that's really how it's supposed to be done, not paid through taxation. So, something for you guys to consider as well.
Yep.
Okay. Hey, and that's it for budget discussions, and second on the list, Mark, is your son going to be here or you just represent?
He's been waiting upstairs.
You're going to represent, okay, I just, um, gentlemen, we're going to jump right over to, uh, class two.
Mm-hmm.
So, gentlemen, class two license approval for Ruckwell. The, uh, from Mr. Blaytown Council gave us some things on, on a, on a pass, class two. For the following statutory conditions apply to those individuals seeking a class two license. The dealer must obtain a bond or equivalent financial security, surety, in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars, which we have a copy of. I don't know, gentlemen, you guys have seen this copy of the surety bond, so that looks good. The surety must include a notice of cancellation sent to the town's license authority within thirty days in the event of a cancellation of the bond that is placed on the bond. The dealer must demonstrate access to repair facility sufficient to enable him to satisfy the repair obligations for vehicles, and four, the dealer must show that the used car business will be his principal business and that he has a place available for that purpose. Clearly think that Mr. Cinerizio and Ruckwell has demonstrated the bond, the surety for the cancellation of thirty days is in, in the bond. Um, I went over that with Ms. Hebert this morning over the telephone. He clearly demonstrates that he has a place of repair, albeit. He clearly demonstrates that he has a place of repair, albeit Repwell's. That's been a repair facility for quite some time, Mr. Merritt, agreed. Um, in the principal place of business, on a, on an earlier note, Mr. Sinnerizio, we seen, I seen something that said it's like a secondary business. I think that one might have been a mistake on that type all era. Um, so it will be the principal-
Yes.
-place of business, right? Principal business of the property.
Yes, sir.
Says it will be his principal business, that he has a place available for that purpose. So acknowledging that's his principal business. And I have nothing further to say about the class two license for Mr. Sinnerizio and Repwell Corporation. Gentlemen, Mr. Merritt, any comments?
No.
Mr. DeRoche, Mr. Wonar?
Pretty straightforward to me.
Is there a motion to approve class two license for Repwell Corp. under the new ownership?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. There you go. Congratulations.
With that, can we get that today, that license? Does it order to get the repair plates or the deal?
Yeah, I know you fell short on the timeline, Mr. Sinnerizio. Um, and if we, we have everything here, I mean, we can, we could give-
I'll have Lisa get it ready.
You want it, if, can can you, can Lisa?
Yes.
Can you give us a copy? Can we just sign this now, while they're here and we can give it to them, they can walk out the door with it?
Yep.
Appreciate it.
You have it available? So if you guys, you guys wanna hold on, we'll, we'll sign that right now?
Awesome.
Lisa, I don't know if you need it to be done in blue pen?
Um.
I have a, well, that looks like black to me without my glasses. That's black. It's got a blue cap. You got blue? Yep. Mr. DeRoche has a blue pen, we can sign it just to make sure. I don't know if it needs to be done in blue pen, but sometimes those things do need to be signed off. And I don't want to have him go to the registry or wherever he needs to go for his plates and say, "Sorry, sir, that needs to be in blue ink."
I thought the registry was black ink, no?
I don't know.
Huh?
I don't know.
You're a used car guy, then you-
No, unfortunately, when I owned my repair shop, I, um, I got jacked by the town of Freetown with my, um, they wouldn't give me a used car license because they said they were all occupied. Um, and you have to wait for one to come up for sale. And now going through this a little bit more, now that I'm on the Board of Selectmen, I've learned that that was a false statement that they made to me, so. I lost out on, uh, significant amounts of revenue over the amount, I was in business for almost fifteen years. So you do the math on that revenue source, right?
Absolutely.
And, um, you know, that's what happens when you, uh, I guess municipalities have people that work for them that don't really know the truth and tell you the truth, right? So it was unfortunate I was on Freetown, but it happened and, uh, whatever. It is what it is now, I'm not in business anymore, thank the Lord.
God bless. Now, can we, do we deal, talk about the class three license, or you want to do that in a night?
I don't have the class three, Mr. Sinnerizio, on the agenda, so we will not discuss class three, but we will-
That's fine, no, I understand completely.
We we will discuss it very soon.
Okay, thank you very much.
I think we'll send our notice, um, because I think that requires a little bit more.
No problem.
So we'll discuss that, um, in the near future. Did we, we make, we made a motion to approve the license in second on the last?
We said, Lisa to bring it, I think we can keep moving through the agenda, right?
Yeah, I am, I am, I'm just gonna, um, Julie, do you need any of this stuff back? Or there's just these copies, or just they're, I know that usually I have a raised surface for a bond, but I don't know if this is, but what?
Yeah, those are just copies.
Okay, that's fine.
Yep, we have everything.
So, uh, gentlemen, CARES Act approval, trailer to transport for EMA, Mr. Bergeron is looking for a trailer. Mr. Bergeron is looking to-
Eighty-nine, I think that number right there is almost nine thousand dollars?
Yeah, I got, I found it. Eighty-nine fifty, so he's looking, he's got a trailer here. It's, this would be used for COVID testing to transport the equipment we purchased. So we, we cleared Mr. Mr. Bergeron on some equipment purchases for COVID, for the CARES Act.
Yep.
And he purchased a bunch of cones and a little barrier things that drop over at like elections and things of that nature, he uses those little things there that we, we were out there for the COVID testing as well.
Yep.
Um, so he's got quite a bit of, uh, equipment. Unfortunately, he has a very small building on Thomas Street over there, and and this is stuff that is actually better suited to be put inside of a trailer so that when he gets called, he can just go there, hook up with his truck and leave. He doesn't have to go in the building, have his people try to assemble enough people at the site to, uh, fill up the trailer and go through all of that work. It's kind of nonsense, so he's asking for a trailer to put all his supplies in for COVID-nineteen testing facilities and things of the like.
And it's coming from CARES Act money?
It is coming from CARES Act money, yep. So and it's in the amount, he's got an estimate here from, uh, BTT Trailers in the amount of, uh, looks like eighty-nine hundred and fifty dollars. So is there a motion to approve the CARES Act request for EMA and Mr. Bergeron in the amount, in the EMA, in the amount of eighty-nine fifty?
So, I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And then we have one, um, after some discussion with, um, Chad Leclerc, park commissioner. Um, he's looking for like twenty-five hundred bucks. We, we had a, an article several years back, um, on town meeting floors approved, I think it was ten thousand dollars to put a roof, a little roof over. That's all falling apart on the stone building behind the Veterans Memorial. And then we were building a little pavilion area, small pavilion area off of that stone building. Um, and due to COVID-nineteen, um, Mr. Leclerc was talking with, uh, DeRoche Brothers, which is the contractor, um, not Old Colony, we're trying to get it because of COVID-nineteen. The DeRoche family said that they would go out there and and do the work. Um, at very little cost as far as labor goes, and they have done that. But speaking with Chad Leclerc, he's asking to extend the pavilion out a bit further due to the pandemic, um, for social distancing requirements. So he wants to go a little bit further while they're out there building it and, you know. I think it's, uh, I think it's a great idea that he's doing that and and we can utilize a bigger area for the pavilion. So, I mean, most of this cost is coming from that warrant, but he wants to extend it and, um, obviously there's a little extra labor and lumber, um, material costs associated with that. Is motion to approve? Second.
I'll, I'll second, um, all right, I'll second.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. 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 Merritt?
Just a quick question. I I know we had looked at that a while back, and and one of my concerns was that there's a substantial amount of electronic equipment in that building, um, which is gonna have to be removed before the roof can be removed and protected while the construction's underway. So I don't know what the budget actually is for that, but they should be taking that into consideration.
We have to move it, um, well, move it to, um-
You're talking about surveillance, right?
I think it's, yeah, that that's part of it, um, plus just the old regular electronics. I think there's a navigation system that's actually monitored from that same place. Yeah, there's-
I talked to Chad last night on the phone, um, for a bit. Um, and he didn't, he didn't, he said he's looking pretty good for the budget, so. I I would anticipate for this purpose of the CARES Act money anyway, it's just an extension of the pavilion through CARES, I would expect that if there's any additional cost incurred, we probably have to ask the board to go for a reserve fund transfer if there's additional monies being needed, um, because that would be kind of hard to correlate and tie to CO, uh, CARES Act money, right, Julie? So we could, we could surely do something with that down the road. But thank you, Mr. Merritt, for your concerns. Uh, notice of intent. Write a first refusal in the chapter sixty-one A for a portion of five forty, uh, Main Street, map eleven, lot ten. Gentlemen, this is something, um, Ms. Kelly Kosker, our town assessor, um, contacted, um, Miss Hebert with in an email dating back somewhere on March, I think it was fourteenth or something, it was the earliest one, eighteenth. And then I spoke with Ms. Kosker on this issue because I've never seen, we've done, um, several times, um, write a first refusals when property is on the chapter.
Thank you. Are we doing black and white or blue and black?
Just use blue, just I'll use blue. Do you, did you make two copies, so we do one in black and one in white?
It doesn't matter.
I mean, one in black and one in blue?
No, it doesn't matter, I don't think. I mean, I just figured I'd make two, I wanted two originals.
Can I use your blue pen?
Yeah?
She just left. Hey, Lisa? Lisa? Can you make sure, I don't have a copy of the old license, can you make sure that-
I got it.
Is it, is it this description?
That's what I was just looking to, looking at.
Can you just look at that and make sure that, I'm pretty sure this is correct?
That's the other one, there it is, there we go.
So does it say six hundred feet, three hundred by three hundred?
Six feet, there we go, three hundred by three hundred, maximum of fifty cars. Seven, four, thirty-four, Main Street.
You got a blue pen?
All right, you need both of those sides or do you want your pen back?
Give me my pen back, Lisa. Does that, do you want?
To these dates, March thirtieth, twenty twenty-one.
Okay, all right.
That's good. That's just describing.
Yeah, that's describing it, I was just curious.
Give them the better one, now when I- So going back to the right of first refusal, gentlemen, we've done it for land takings, um, as far as land purchases, I should say, under the, under the confines of chapter sixty-one A. Um, this one's a land lease for a solar field off of Main Street. And we, under the, the right of first refusal for a land lease, town council's advised us that we only have thirty days to act on it. By the time we received this notification and got clarification from town council through Ms. Kosker, our assessor, um, the time limit was pretty much extra nothing.
Yeah.
For the, we would have to go through an appraisal, give fair, um, fair market cash value. It says, uh, if we wanted to act on the right of first refusal, we need to have the Board of Selectmen vote and a notice by March thirtieth, which is today. At that point, we would also need an appraisal completed, so our notice can delineate the appraised value of land. Um, it goes on to say the appraisal would be two thousand bucks. Um, in in my opinion, gentlemen, it's a little late to be acting on this right of first refusal, so.
Agreed. Motion to deny?
Before go our, uh, right of first refusal?
Yeah, I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And reserve fund transfer, we did the approval for dispatcher.
Uh-huh.
And then we have a reserve fund transfer for planning board advertisements. Julie, the only question that I had is, I, I thought our bylaws, and I don't know if it's just for site plan approval, but I thought it was for, for everything. And it's built by a, an engineering firm in the amount of a hundred and forty-five dollars and ninety-five cents. I I thought this was supposed to be paid by the developer, not by us, the town.
If it, if it's something related to the development, yeah, then we do, like, we'll pay the bill and they reimburse us, but my understanding was this wasn't the case.
Says certified mail-in for planning board paid by Xenith Lancer Bears for the Peckham Road project.
I agree. I, I mean, I, I asked about it as well, and I was told it wasn't, that wasn't the case, but I thought the same thing. I, I think regardless, they do need money, their, their balance is already negative from all of their-
Yeah, what are they looking for? They're looking for, uh, they're looking for a four hundred and five dollars amount requested. They have an outstanding bill. Um, is there a motion to approve the reserve fund transfer in the amount of four hundred and five dollars? They have a negative balance in their advertising. They only carry seven hundred and ninety-five dollars in in advertising in their budget, so. I I just, a little concerned about paying bills for developers when I could have sworn that all these notices and things of the like should be paid for by the developers, their responsibility under our bylaws, not ours, so.
Yeah.
I think we should re- request a copy of that more detailed invoice. And if it's for advertising, um, we should not be paying that.
Yep.
I'm okay with doing that.
So is there a, the motion to approve, they're still looking, I mean, they still have, uh, three months left in the calendar year, gentlemen, and they already say they're, they're carrying a negative balance in their, in their budget line, I mean, five, three, four, four, zero, zero. So they're looking for four hundred and five bucks, it's basically half their budget that they budgeted for the whole year. And they do have a lot of, uh, hearings and and notices coming up. So is there a motion to approve the amount requested in the amount of four hundred and five dollars for the reserve fund transfer? So move?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Julie, you just have some things here under, uh, information only.
Yep.
Talk about the water rates when Dan comes in for his budget next week. And Ms. Silva, registered to each town election, that's Ms. Labonte. And there's some notice from Freetown Planning Board for CVE North America Large Scale Solar Middleborough Road Solar Project Review of Matters. Um, I I would assume that some of that property for for this is right by where my old business used to be. I'm assuming that that property must have bought Town of a Cushion at Land.
Mm-hmm. Yep, so we're getting the notice, um, as like a, a butter.
Mm-hmm. What was the date on that?
Um, it's April sixth at six o'clock.
Yeah, it's a Zoom meeting. Town of Freetown Planning Board will conduct a public hearing on Tuesday, April sixth, two thousand twenty, at six P.M. to act on the application of CVE North America. So if anybody wants to, uh, Zoom in, they can contact the Town of Freetown's Planning Board and get the Zoom information. It's on Middleborough Road, right at the fork in the road off the Cushion Avenue, Route eighteen. Uh, Middleborough Road goes that way, County Road goes that way. So it's, it's right after that fork where everybody's pizza is.
So they're notifying us just because we're the butter?
Yeah.
I guess we must have some conservation land and the, of the like out there, right? So anybody that's within, I think it's three hundred feet of said property is considered a one of, is that right? Three hundred feet? So that's the deal with that. Town administrators report, Miss Hebert, you have anything for the board?
No, I'm, I'm good for today.
You're good for today? You know, we have, uh, executive session under general law, chapter thirty A, subsection twenty-one A three, to conduct strategy in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel to conduct contract negotiations with non-union personnel. If an open meeting will have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body, the chair still declares, is there a motion to go into executive session and not return to public session? Roll call vote, Mr. Wonar?
Yes.
Mr. DeRoche?
Yes.
And anyone else? We are now in executive session.